I give him a special meeting of the Friendswood City Council to be held on Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at six P. M. at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, nine ten, South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, to discuss the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I call the meeting to order. Invitation by Danny Mercer with Friendswood Church of Christ, and if you'll stay standing, we'll do the United States and the Texas pledge.
Almighty God, thank you for this day. Thank you for the changing of the seasons. They remind us of our lives, the changing of the seasons of our lives. Thank you for this community, for this gathering of people who've come together to collaborate and to work together to make this community a place of joy and love, where families can raise their children and people can work and retire and enjoy the blessing of being neighbors. We invite you, oh God, to be here tonight, give wisdom and guidance to these leaders that they might make decisions that would be a blessing to the families and the people that choose to call Friendswood home and choose to educate their children here and choose to live and die here. I pray through Christ our Lord. Amen.
To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regulars council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Item five, discussion of possible action regarding discussion of proposed amendments to the Ordinance Number twenty sixteen oh nine, limiting the period for the imposition of the type B sales and use tax, and directing city attorney review for approval as to form. Do I hear motion?
(inaudible).
Does anybody want to talk? No. I was, sorry. I really forgot. Sally Branson.
You can't forget, even my mom's going to speak this evening.
Sorry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I first want to say your service and commitment to our community is greatly appreciated. Those who choose to serve do so not because of the huge paycheck you receive, because of it's in your heart, and I thank you for having Friendswood in your heart. I'm Sally Branson. I'm a resident of Friendswood for over forty years. My home located at four eleven Fallow Lane wasn't here when my family first moved here in nineteen seventy-four. I realize some of you weren't here in nineteen seventy-four either. It was a pecan orchard, and hence the name of the subdivision. The reason I go into this is that I wanted to highlight that a lot of change has occurred over the last forty years, and it's inevitable that there'll be a lot of change over the next forty years. If you take a look at Friendswood back in the seventies, even in the sixties, it's very different. Matter of fact, if you can remember back what our old city hall looked like, and now you're in our new city hall, a lot of change. Change is scary, especially when you know what it will be, but I do believe that control can ease the fear factor, and I think that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is controlling the change. I think that's what is the essence of all of this. Congratulations on approving the one-eighth cent on the May ballot. Appreciate that. In doing so, you have allowed the citizens of Friendswood to speak their mind. I would encourage you, please don't limit them, hear them out. I do believe that once they've all had a chance to speak, you, the council, will have the final word. With the one-eighth, when, excuse me, not if, but when the one-eighth cent proposition passes, City Council will be controlling the change by determining how the revenue will be utilized, including borrowing, as that may be of concern to some. At the same time, council will have the opportunity to take the proverbial lid off the box, hear all the ideas, good or bad, and all the ideas will come tumbling out. In other words, council will have the ability to hear all suggestions without limitation, similar to P. and Z. or any of our other boards. You'll be able to hear those ideas, they'll be presented to you in advisory mode only, and that they will be suggestions. Council will have the final say. I want to read to you a quick little excerpt, "What We're Experiencing Here Isn't Anything Different." It comes from Joyce Baker's book, and it covers, it says, "The problems," tell me if any of this sounds familiar, "the problems the council was addressing in the eighties and nineties were the same ones Friendswood had been dealing with since nineteen sixty. Streets and sewage, the control of signs, flooding and drainage, taxes, city personnel and annexations. As usual, there were differences of opinion on each issue, and politics, emotions, back scratching, and personalities played a part in each decision. Among the more controversial was the issue of annexations. One group of settlers wanted Friendswood to remain small, restricted, highly zoned, bedroom community. Another group wanted equally as fervently for Friendswood to annex areas which could include housing developments across Clear Creek and an industrial district which would help lighten the tax load for homeowners." Does that sound familiar? If the sunset clause is added to the one-eighth cent proposition, it will have already failed because the opportunity to fully explore the possibilities will be limited. Consider this, if at any time council determines the benefit of the one-eighth proposition has not been realized by the community, it can be placed on the ballot for removal. Once again, council is controlling the change. I encourage you to put the one-eighth cent proposition before the citizens with no limitation, allowing the community to be heard. Have faith in our community. After all, we are Friendswood." And finally, in Joyce's words, "I see you, John. No one can know or even imagine the changes the future holds. One can only trust that a special characteristic of Friendswood will never change. Those who have chosen Friendswood want to believe that its heart will never change, that it will always remain a settlement of friendly folks. The past is our heritage, the present is our responsibility, the future is our challenge." Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Jerry Erickson.
If the nineteen sixties could be described as the years of the city's birth and childhood, then perhaps the nineteen seventies could be described as the city's teenage years. Those are Joyce Baker's words on page ninety-five of her book, History, on the history of Friendswood. That would put Friendswood's retirement out years beginning about twenty thirty or nearer, and are we prepared? Having a long-term vision is a part of good leadership. Families who focus on the immediate needs without planning for retirement won't do well in their out years. Friendswood has traditionally emphasized planning for our out years and the well-being of residents who will follow us. Recent mayors and council have brought water rights and facilities to take us to build out. Friendswood has kept a majority of ninety-foot lots and taken steps to attain and retain appropriate commercial zoning. In fact, Ralph Lowe was most visionary. Mary Lowe's purchasing of the land that is now Stevenson Park was thought to be unnecessarily expensive for the land so far from downtown. He also said, "In lieu of small sanitation facilities popping up along Clear Creek like mushrooms, the Black Hawk Water Treatment Plan, Friendswood's retained fifty-one percent ownership, is another example of this visionary leadership credited to Mary Lowe." The creation of H. G. A. C. is further evidence of his long-term thinking. The benefits of such visionary investments require nurturing and time to reap the best rewards. Some families or cities without vision would cook the goose that lays the golden egg and then brag about the great meal. Let's follow Friendswood's own precedents, be visionary, think long-term, make Friendswood's out years better for our children and those that follow. Friendswood has but one economic lifespan to give. Let's nurture it, let's not inhibit it by placing nearsighted time limits on the eighth cent investment in our downtown. Thank you.
Jerry Stacey and then Brett Banfield.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Councilman, let me first start by thanking you for passing the one-eighth already at your last meeting. My name is Jerry Stacey. I have been a resident of Friendswood for over thirty years. I grew up in a small town with about the same size population as Friendswood. We had a great downtown with the old buildings on our main street that had a great look and feel to them. I would like to see Friendswood with its own unique and special look and feel. As a member of the Friendswood Rotary Club and the Chamber of Commerce, I have seen the positive results of partnering with the city. Our Rotary Pavilions in Stevenson Park are a testimony to what we can achieve together. The annual events led by the Chamber and the support that the Chamber provides to the city, to businesses and individuals, attest to our ability to work with and for the city and the community. A long time ago, I worked with local governments in upstate New York, and I say a long time ago because we referred to them as computer systems, not I.T. at the time. I was able to leverage public money by working with the computer vendors in several different venues to make sure that local governments got the best bang for their buck. Then, as now, public funds were limited, but by working with both the government and the vendors, we were able to stretch public dollars successfully. I believe that the best use of tax, sales tax dollars over the long term is for the city to partner with local businesses and individuals, the citizens of Friendswood. In working with the city, we can work together to implement the best projects, excuse me, to enhance downtown and promote the maintenance of city streets. With local businesses, we can work to enhance their business footprints on Main Street. With the citizens, as noted by the mayor and councilman Hill, by careful selection of products, City Council can contribute to building a sense of pride in homeowners and business owners that can translate into improvements into their house fronts and business fronts. It takes time to achieve the best results in many civic improvement programs. By not setting a time limit, a sunset horizon to the one-eighth sales tax ordinance, we'll not only be able to borrow money, but also attract private funds to support downtown projects. We already have tentative commitments from several large investors to support those types of projects. We foresee crowdfunding some projects that have general appeal. We need to show business owners, and especially potential business owners, that this is the beginning of a long-term joint effort. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Brett Banfield, then, Benette Rowley and Linda Harris.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. Tonight, I'd like to share with you just one number, one little stat here, a hundred and thirty million dollars. This is the number that represents the annual unmet demand by Friendswood residents for general merchandise, restaurants, and specialty shops. It is essentially the estimate what we spend outside of Friendswood for basic goods and services, a hundred and thirty million dollars a year. A hundred million, a hundred and thirty million dollars flows from our city residents to other cities every year. A hundred and thirty million is what we put, what we are putting in the business located in Pearland, Webster, Alvin, Lake City, Houston, and other surrounding areas. This is a portion of our disposable income of Friendswood that Friendswood residents are spending at the full tax rate of eight and a quarter that we are not spending in our hometown, a hundred and thirty million dollars a year. This is potentially two point six million in sales tax revenues that leaves Friendswood and goes into the bank accounts of our surrounding cities. On the charge I just passed out, they call this retail leakage. I would use the term retail hemorrhage. We have so much of our hard-earned dollars leaving our community and funding other cities' projects, infrastructures, and goods and services. Why are we not spending, why are we spending a hundred and thirty million in other cities? Because simply we can't spend it here. We don't have enough restaurants, we don't have enough specialty shops, we don't have enough leisure and entertainment venues, so we leave our community to fulfill our unmet demands. If we could just recapture one-third of these expenditures, just one-third, that would generate over eight hundred thousand dollars in sales tax revenues for the city of Friendswood. That would pay for a lot of future street repairs. Having a type B sale tax to fund downtown improvements to attract new business is a smart investment. Investments require time. I would like to address one point that was raised at the last meeting about this investment, or that it's public money being spent for private business owners. This is simply not true. We ourselves have installed the pavers, the benches, the lights, and the trees along Friendswood Drive and Shadow Bend, and every bit of these public amenities are in the public right-of-way. They're either in the tech stop right-of-way or the city of Friendswood right-of-way. None of it, I repeat, none of it, is on our private property. It's all in the public property. This investment in downtown will be for public amenities, instead, installed in a public right-of-way for, to be utilized by the public. Don't put this investment at risk with a time limit. It would constrain the efforts to successfully create a vibrant and economic downtown. A long-term consumption tax is the only chance we have to get some of that money we dump in our surrounding communities. Let's work together and bring these sales tax dollars back home. Thank you.
Hi, this is my first time to speak at a city council meeting, so thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Benette Rowley, and I'm a Friendswood resident for sixteen years. I'm the general manager of Dunn Brothers Coffee, I'm the president of the Friendswood Farmers Market, and I'm the vice chair of the Friendswood Chamber of Commerce. I opened and have been the general manager of Dunn Brothers since two thousand and eleven. I heard the people of Friendswood had long desired a pedestrian-friendly indoor and outdoor gathering spot that is family-friendly, serving casual food, freshly baked goods, breakfast sandwiches, and of course, serving the best coffee in the area, and providing all the types of entertainment for all its residents. Well, Dunn Brothers is the prime example of the saying, "If you build it, they will come." We are crowded from the morning rush, open at six A. M., until we close our doors at ten P. M. at night. In fact, we are constantly the number one store in the nation. We host a variety of groups here, from the Tuesday and Thursday morning Bible study groups from the F. I. S. D. coaches and staff, homeschoolers teaching on the patio, Saturday morning Porsche Club meets, study groups of all ages, and I see many of your kids there, business people meeting their clients, and again, I see many of you in the store, book signings from local and national authors, birthday parties, political meet-and-greets, artisan craft fairs, and especially the live music. I have open mic, Irish music sessions, touring bands, and especially our own local musicians that have no place to play, for that families can come to except at my establishment. They all find us an ideal meeting place, a venue, and a much-needed fit for our community. Dunn Brothers is a destination for many people from miles around, not just the Friendswood area. People drive from Austin, College Station, Houston, for the live music by a band that's on tour, and they're only performing here at Dunn Brothers. The Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo was kicked off by the radio station, The Bull, and they did a live broadcast from Dunn Brothers. The coach of the Harlem Globe Trotters had a fortieth surprise birthday party for his wife because they happened to be in town and heard about our place. Friendson Court across the street is a destination also, and we benefit from each other. A quarter of more similar businesses would be an even greater destination, and each of us would benefit. Wouldn't it be nice to employ Friendswood residents that actually live here and that they can work here? Eighty percent of the kids that I employ at the shop are Friendswood residents. Dunn Brothers was to have been an even bigger initial presence here on South Friendswood Drive, our main street, but we met with city residents back then rather than support. This is the past, and I hope we can only move forward, for my place has been a huge success, showing it can be done. As a member of the F. D. F. A., I believe they are not curtailed. Their long-term support and efforts will make it easier for other businesses to follow. It can and will be a win-win for Dunn Brothers, Friendson Court, other Friendswood downtown businesses, and most importantly, the people of Friendswood. We are a caring organization of residents and key leaders widely respected in our community. Please don't put up roadblocks, please don't set premature time limits on the efforts, and please don't miss out on the energy and momentum, and please don't look a gift horse in the mouth. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for being a visionary council, moving forward and not stuck in the past. Thank you.
Daniel Gage and David O'Farrell. After Mrs. Harris.
Hello. Linda Harris, thank you for letting me speak. How do you follow that? That was awesome. Okay. I and my family are long-term active residents of Friendswood. We all know that it will take revenue to keep up with our city's growth and to sustain our infrastructure. You can't change that, but you can shift some of the burden to a sales tax that is paid in part by those who are other than Friendswood citizens. You know, there are multiple routes for any organization to reach a destination, but once one is chosen, all should support it, especially leaders. Even if you were opposed to the one-eighth cent to revitalize downtown, join the team and give it your best shot. It does take courage and wisdom to forecast future needs and invest in future returns, to anticipate changes and not kick the can down the road, but what does short-sighted limiting say to potential business owners? What does short-sightedness do to the effectiveness of this August-capable group who are dedicating themselves to improving the looks and finances of our city? Don't tie their hands. Thank you so much.
My name is Daniel Gage, resident of Friendswood for fifty-one years. My wife and I graduated from Friendswood High School. We grew up in Friendswood. My wife and I, we started our careers outside of Friendswood, myself in the Galleria area and my wife in the Clear Lake area, but I soon came to Clear Lake, Nasa area, and we both had a very large clientele, and when we got ready to start our business, we had a choice to start in the Houston area or the Clear Lake area. But I had a vision to start our business in the town I grew up in, to open the first contemporary upscale salon in Friendswood. We started our business, Sheer Pleasure Salon in Friendswood, in nineteen seventy-six, and thank God, our clientele's followed us to Friendswood. As a very young businessman, I didn't know about demographics, didn't know about, really about the importance of location, or how the mindset of city council members could affect future growth. All I had was a long-term vision and a good work ethic. You see, I played football for the late coach, Henry Winston, and he taught us discipline, hard work, and always give a hundred and ten percent. That's why we annihilated most of our opponents. I applied that, those characteristics to my business. For at least the first fifteen-plus years of our business, seventy to eighty percent of our business came from outside of Friendswood. And even today, we have eleven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight clients on our client database, and out of those, five thousand and ten have a seven-seven-five-four-six zip code. I'm convinced that if there were more businesses in downtown Friendswood, many of our clients that come from outside of Friendswood would spend money here in Friendswood. Successful businesses breed other successful businesses. I dreamed of having a salon on Friendswood Drive, the main street of Friendswood. We used to have a location in the old Kroger shopping center, where now New Hope Church is, and it's kind of off the beating path, but Kroger's one day approached me, and there was an empty bay on the other side of me, but Kroger's approached me and said, "We want to expand, and we want to expand your direction, and we want to buy out your lease and pay you a lump sum to get out." And they gave me ninety days to get out. And I met with my client, Tom Burke, owner of T. Burke Construction, and told him my situation, and he said, "Daniel, I can build you a building in ninety days." We then met with then Ralph, Mayor Ralph Lowe at the time, who also was involved and instrumental in making a post for me to build on the property where I am now located. Ralph Lowe was pro-business, and he was a visionary, an incredible visionary. I'll never forget him telling me, "Daniel, right next door, they're going to build the city hall, where we stand right now." He said, "One day, this will be the center of Friendswood, and downtown Friendswood will grow up all around you." Well, I've been waiting a long time. Recently, it's now soaring to happen. You see, I know what it's like for your business to grow when the leadership of the city is helpful, and I know what it's like to not be able to grow when the leadership of the city is not cooperative in helping create business-friendly environment that allows a small business to grow. By nineteen ninety, my business had outgrown our parking lot, and there was a hundred-foot by seventy-five-foot little parcel of land the city owned right behind my parking lot. The only way to get there was to drive through my parking lot.
Daniel?
Yes.
Got it, Tom.
Okay. Can I have one minute? One more minute? Anyway, I met with the city council and asked if I could buy the property, and they rejected that. Then I later came back and said, "Can I lease the property?" They rejected that. And then Janice Low, city council at the time, and Eileen Dickey, also city council member at the time, presented to the city and persuaded them that it would be good for the city to partner with us, and, because I went to them saying, "I'll, I'll improve that land, build a parking lot the city can have access to, my customers have access to," and so the city decided to enter into a license agreement to use that property. I've lived in Friendswood long enough to know churches in Friendswood that have short-sighted vision and are now in a position unable to grow. I know years ago, our school board had a short-sighted vision and now has a high school that is landlocked. I hope the city council will not be short-sighted, will have a long-term vision for our downtown area, and will be visionary like some leaders that we've had in the past. Thank you.
David, you know three minutes, right?
Okay. Well, I wasn't going to say it, but since it's kind of an old-home week, I was actually born here sixty years ago, so I'm going to trump you just a little bit there, Daniel, but I'm thankful we're not running on oyster shell roads out here, throwing up clouds of dust during the summer. It's, you know, this city has just grown, and it's nothing but good. It's been a blessing living here, and I want to begin tonight by thanking this council. You represent a great heritage of leadership that this community's enjoyed. Your vision and your courage have blessed us and continue to bless us, and we thank you. And secondly, I want to thank you for allowing the one-eighth to appear on the May ballot. Again, vision and courage, and looking at what Friendswood can be. It's what Friendswood's always been about. Regards to the issue of the sundown clause on the one-eighth, I just have a story to tell you. A few years ago, I, you know, was facing a decision in my company as to whether it was time to let go of the reins and turn it over to my son's capable hands, Chris. He'd been with me for twenty years, and he had done every grimy, gritty job there was to be done. He'd worked through the hundred-degree heat of August in Friendswood, Texas, and he'd earned it. He was hardworking, he was dedicated, and he'd shown great talent. And so I did. I turned it over to him. Sort of. Looking back now, I realize that, in fact, I held on to the reins. I micromanaged his work, I second-guessed his decisions, and most of all, I clung really tightly to that checkbook. And as you can imagine, within two years, we were both frustrated to no end, and I really realized I had a decision to make. Either I was going to put the reins down, and I was going to let him run with it, or I was going to have to step back in and run it myself. And I did, and you guessed it, he exceeded all expectations. And I find in that story, I think, a parallel that fits what's before this council tonight, and that is, in this room, you have Friendswood's hardest-working, most dedicated, gifted citizens that we have. And the best part about them, just as Sally said, they're just like everyone on this council. They have Friendswood in their hearts, and what they're asking you to do is to let them run with this, to not hobble them, and the promise is, they're going to exceed every expectation. And a day in the not-too-distant future, the citizens of this friends, of this city, Friendswood, are going to be stepping up to this council and saying, "I love what you've done with our downtown, and your decision here tonight will have been critical in that process." Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Item six, consideration of possible acts regarding the following in an Ordinance Number twenty sixteen sixteen, first and final reading, omitting an Ordinance Twenty sixteen oh nine, ordering an economic development, sales, and use tax election to be held on May seventh, two thousand and sixteen. An ordinance of the City Council of Friendswood amending Ordinance Number Twenty sixteen oh nine, calling for the holding of a special election on May seventh, two thousand and sixteen, for the purpose of authorizing a local economic development, sales, and use tax at the rate of one-eighth of one percent pursuant to Chapter five oh five, Texas Local Government Code, limiting the period for imposition of such tax and making other provisions related to the subject. Do I hear motion?
You've already read number five as well, but we need to, that item handled first.
Discussion and possible action regarding discussion of proposed amendments to Ordinance Twenty sixteen oh nine, limiting the period of imposition of a twenty sixteen oh nine, limiting the period of imposition of a type B sales and use tax and directing city attorney review for approval as to form. Now...
I have a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we do amend ordinance two oh one six dash zero nine to add a sunset provision of four years to the ballot proposal.
Do you have a second? Do we have a second?
I have a point of order. We're on item five, right? Which is just a motion to discuss.
It's just a motion to discuss.
This is just a motion to discuss, correct?
So that's your motion, to discuss?
For clarification, Mayor, there will be one vote needed to be taken on this, and that is whether to direct that I review...
Correct.
...the final form of the ordinance. If, and if that motion passes, then we would move on to item number six.
I second the motion.
First, go ahead.
Okay. Gosh, well, thank you, Mayor and Council.
That's when they got to it.
You did. And first of all, I wish I had thought of this two weeks ago. It would have been better to discuss this idea when we went through this the first time. When the idea crystallized in my mind that we ought to have a sunset provision, it was, you know, one or two days later, and I thank my fellow council members that at least agreed to have this special meeting so that we could discuss the idea. So why do I propose this? I think in our last meeting, you heard me offer a principled dissent of why I thought that the type B Economic Development Corporation was not the best idea. I, I won't go through all of those items, but I think most of the people here heard that. And congratulations to all of you that have advocated that and persuaded the will of the council to vote in that favor. So, you know, I'm a member of the downtown group, and I am aligned with these goals that we all have for the downtown. But I felt it was just my duty to bring this forward for discussion. In comparison, the sales tax for streets by the state law has a built-in four-year sunset provision. This tax does not, but it is allowable. It's up to the, the city council to add that and up to the citizens to propose that, or to vote on that. I think that doing this adds a structural measure of fiscal responsibility and accountability into this idea, and I see that as valuable. Four years from now, should it be passed, then the council will automatically be forced to do an evaluation. They'll look back, look at the return on investment, do some sort of cost-benefit evaluation. And you know what? If things are as we envisioned, I think it'll be an easy choice for the council at that time to say, "Absolutely, let's continue with this. Let's put this back out to the voters to continue." If in four years, it turns out we have not had good development, or we've not had good projects or good investment, then I think it behooves the council to confront that as well and make a decision. And if, on the other hand, that our wildest expectations are fully exceeded, then guess what? The council at that time would not only want to continue it again, but they'd also have the opportunity to trade off the ratio between the expiring streets tax at that time. And maybe instead of an eighth of a cent, the council could make it a quarter of a cent. So I think what I'm proposing is a structural measure that will ensure a good cost-benefit analysis in four years. Secondly, I think there are, there are people in town like myself that are going to be skeptical of this type B sales tax, and showing that we are putting some emoticon of boundaries around that, I think will help it to pass as well. So that is my, my argument for now, Mayor, and I'd be happy, glad to hear what our fellow council members have to say.
Councilmember Scott?
Well, I, I echo everything that, that Councilman McGinnis said. I, nobody questions the motives or the intentions of the volunteers on the downtown district group. Nobody does. I don't, and I don't know of anyone up here that, that would. I think we're all respectful and appreciative of the efforts that you guys have put forward. The, the question always comes down to what best serves as fuel for the economic engine that is capitalism. Is it public money, or is it private money? I will always argue, and I think history is on my side, that private money is best used, because private money, the guy that puts his investment in it has skin in the game. He has blood in the game, and his investment lives or dies on his work. In the public sector, we know, whether it's local governments, whether it's state governments, whether it's school districts, whether it is county entities, whether it is federal government, if I've already said that, that government does not do things efficiently. And they all start out the same exact way that this group does, with great volunteers, with great motives, with great initiative, with great work ethic, and great visions. They all do. And over a period of time, they fester into this huge wound that can never again be closed. There's no accountability for where the money has gone. There's no accountability as to how the money is spent. And so it just continues to balloon. And for the thirty-eight thousand folks that have sat home and, and don't pay attention to what goes on over here, they only find out about it whenever they finally are taxed enough that they can't do it anymore. And then they want to jump up and down and scream. And at that time, ten years has gone by, or fifteen years has gone by, and nobody's there that started the, the original deal. So my objection, again, is not to, not to your motives or not to, to your initiatives, because I think you have all volunteered greatly for our community. You've served our community, most of you, and you have great hearts, and I know what you're here to do. The only thing, and, and, and again, I rec, I acknowledge that you guys got the vote that you wanted, and I'm proud for you, and I hope that you do best. But the only thing that we can do as a council to bring accountability to the public money, the taxpayer money that, that will be spent on this, is to ensure that you have to work as hard for the money in four years as a private investor would work. You're going to have to work for the money just as hard in four years as the next council will have to work when they go back out for the roads. I don't think that, that we're asking too much. I don't think that it's being too stringent. We have a list of roads that have to be accomplished. You saw them at the last meeting. There's five-point-three million dollars worth of roads that are, that we don't have funding for. If we get this passed, we may come up with close to being able to finish what's there, but more will be added to the list. But there's an accountability trigger in there for the city council and for city staff. You get four years, and it sunsets. And so if you can show progress, you can go out and you can persuade the citizens to move forward on getting it again. So I applaud Councilman McGinnis for bringing this up. I think it's a, a great way to provide accountability, and, and I don't see any reason why the Friends of the downtown district should not have to work just as hard to get the money back in four years, as city council will have to work to get the money back in four years for their roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, in, in preparing for this meeting, I actually went back. I've, I've been on council four years, and I went back and I looked, and this will be the thirteenth meeting the local sales tax has been on our agenda. And that tells me two things. One is, we've had people out there that say, "This is hasty. How can it be hasty? It's been four years. We've, we've, this is the most talked-about topic we've ever had." The second thing is, though, in that, in those twelve meetings, no one's ever talked about a limit on this. So it's, 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 we've had plenty of time to think about this. The way I look at this is, and, and we're all, we all think this way, is we feel like we have to set something up that's going to stand the test of time. We don't. In fact, anything this council does, another council can undo. And in fact, in the four years I've been on this council, we have undone other things that other councils have done. We do it routinely. So I think putting a limit on this is unnecessary. Any future council can always put this back in front of the voters, who are the ultimate authority on this, and decide it's done, expand it, do whatever they think it is. We are not going to be able to predict how they're going to think. We have to leave that up to the wise people of set, of Friendswood, to put good people in these chairs in the future. The other thing i- is, we keep talking about the one-eighth, as it's this group, and the city is the, is the three eights. It's not true. This one-eighth is us. It's us, us, us. There isn't one group or another. It is city council of Friendswood that owns it. And we're the ones that will have to make it happen, not, not the group out there, not some other group. I, I don't support putting a sunset date on this. We have had, the city's a hundred-and-twenty years old right now. Took a hundred-and-twenty years to put this downtown in the shape it is, good, bad, or indifferent. Four years is not enough time to, to fix it. So in my opinion, council has to own this one-eighth. It's us. A future council can always undo what we're doing. And, and we are, we are, what we are asking here is to allow the citizens of Friendswood to decide if they want to do this. And in later date, you can let the citizens of Friendswood decide they don't want to do it. Now, I don't believe for a minute, as, as, as Councilman McGinnis said, that, that this is an easy vote to win. I think this is a very difficult vote to win. And it can go either way, and it would not surprise me either way. But I think we have a group of people who are going to work really hard for it, and I, I don't think that it needs a sunset to pass. I think i- it's going to pass, or it's not going to pass on its merits. So I don't think this is necessary. I'm not for it, and I think we are, we are trying to take a tool out of a future council's pocket that we can't do, that they will be able to always manage. Thank you.
Councilmember Enox?
Tonight's not about getting philosophical. We had that discussion last meeting, and this passed four to three. I appreciate you recounting those numbers. Now, I know I feel like a broken record talking about this subject. I'm going to bounce around a little bit, so forgive me. The, the thoughts going through my head is, th- these are very different entities. When you look at the streets, we already have a list of streets that we know. We already, we already know we're going to spend six million dollars to improve our streets. So as soon as this passes in May, we can hit the ground running and start tackling projects. So there's, there's no, there's no delay, there's no pause. And at some point, we'll have to rack and stack and reprioritize and, and do some sort of engineering analysis to understand what other streets do we need to go tackle. But, but, we, we hit the ground running with the streets. The thing that's different about the, the four B is, we've never done this as a city. And I have more questions than I have answers on, on how we're going to go about putting this together, how are we going to make up the seven-member body, what its, its bylaw's going to be, are we going to charter it, you know? What are our ground rules? There's a lot we have to do. And so I could very well see this taking a considerable amount of time, and picking a, a time like four years, one sounds very short, but more importantly, it's very arbitrary. It's not based on anything. And to me, until we understand what this group's going to look like, what our vision is, what are our top three, top four objectives, how long do we think that's going to take, and how much money do we think it's going to take? Will we be in a position to really understand what's the right amount of time to, to put on this? And, and Councilman Scott and Rocky, if you remember, the, the Park Subcommittee we put together, it probably took us over a year before we got, by the time we had our meetings and before we came to some conclusions, and then got council's buy-in on that. And that was a very easy project, a very limited scope. And the bridge still isn't built. And then that's another thing. With the streets, we don't have to, it's not going to be dependent upon waiting for, for meetings to get scheduled, for it to be posted, for Robert's rules to be followed, for agendas to be put out, for minutes to be taken, and things of that nature. Whereas this group, I would imagine that's how it's going to have to operate. Things are going to have to be voted on, presentation are going to have to be made. It's, it's going to take some time. This, thankfully, and, and for good reason, when city gets involved, or governments get involved, it, things don't move quickly. And so I'd hate for us to put an arbitrary timeframe of four years on this, and we would just really start getting some good traction, and whatever the will of councils at that time decides to, to sunset it, for whatever reason, a lot of hard work and effort may have been in vain. If we want to talk longer term, eight, twelve years, like, you know, that's still to me arbitrary, because we're not based on anything, but at least it's a longer bit of time for to get some momentum, to get an idea of the vision, to get an understanding of what it is all we're going to accomplish, and what we're going to go tackle. And in rack and stack those priorities, I could, I could see that, that discussion. But four years is, is way too short. It's, it's putting handcuffs on this group right out of the chute. Our job as city councils, and once we have the vision, is to help these groups be successful, not for them to, to start out with, with handcuffs on them, trying to navigate this That's my thoughts. I'll think about it some more.
Everybody gets to talk twice tonight. Councilmember Gusterson? So you don't want to talk right now?
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer my time.
Okay, go ahead, John. Or, Councilmember Hill, I'm sorry.
Really?
Wanted to get my second turn out of the way. Go ahead.
Yeah, anyway. Now, I've got a few comments. You know, Councilman Rocky said that this was us. Well, I, we need your group to help us in four years on the streets. And I don't think this is handcuffs at all. I think it's an opportunity to prove what we can do in four years. In four years, all the bond projects will have been completed. Trust me, they will be done. The library will be done, the sports fields will be done, the bridge will be across the creek. We're well on our way. And in four years, you can accomplish a lot. And I think, I mean, I don't know why y'all are, it's like you're afraid to fail. I don't think you will fail. It would never enter my mind that y'all would fail. I know y'all are going to get it done. And I have concerns about how you will get it done. Like, who's going to pay for the engineering? Is the city staff going to have to be involved in engineering? I don't know how you're going to go about this. I haven't had any answers, any, I don't know. And I, I hope y'all have done some thoughts on it, because it's expensive. I can just tell you, we pay ten percent of a project for engineering. That's just, and I know that's scary to Brett, because he ain't used to it, and regular business, it's not like that. But, and that's where the time comes in. But in four years, I don't, I just know the citizens will support renewing this when they see, you can, you could put a lot of walks in in four years. We're actually going to have ours done within a year, and that's the city doing it. And what other thing we, we talked about was, we've been talking about this for four years, and it was never talked about a sunset. No, because the state mandates a sunset on the streets. It's not, nothing, we, we didn't even talk about economic development that I know of until after October of this past year. So if there's anything rushed, it's the economic development part of this. We didn't rush into anything, and, and we had our reasons, we've done our due diligence, and I think we waited till the right time. We need your help. But in the same side of that coin, I think you need our help. I, people say, "Why aren't you for downtown?" I said, "I'm for downtown. I've probably done as much for downtown Friendswood as anybody. I've worked hard for it." And I appreciate what y'all are wanting to do. I'm right there with you. I want the same thing. But I don't know why, in four years, you don't think you could show the taxpayers of this town that you have done enough, that you deserve another four years. I think it might actually help get it passed, because I'm like everybody else. I have concern about this whole thing getting passed by the voters. Some voters just don't like additional tax. It's just that simple. And so anyway, it's a very rough field to plow, but I think in four years, y'all can have some good things out there. If you're mainly going to, from what I understood, the first goal is to put in sidewalks, the lights, and the benches. Pick your easy shots, just like shooting birds. Take the easy ones first. But you can show what you can do in four years. It's a long time. Start right out here by Mr. Gage's property, and, you know, that's a good place. I think he would agree. But I think that the four years will help you, and then in four years, you will help us. It's us. You, you can't just say, "Well, in four years, you're on your own." Because you said that, well, you, I don't, never mind what's been said, but, but it's got to be a team effort, or we're all going to fail. or we're all gonna fail. And I just think the four years will help us get this passed. If we don't get some street built, I mean, it's like, you gotta earn your wings. You know, we have to earn our wings up here all the time, or we're gone. And I think, I think, I think you guys can get it done. I don't know what you're worried about with the four-years clause.
Have you gathered your thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Gustafson?
All right. Let me start off. I, those that have been, I guess, most adamantly against this, hate the sales tax, are the ones that have historically been the most fiscally conservative members of this council. I won't begrudge them that. I wanna be real clear. I share those same conservative principles that these other members of council share. But they're taking a federalist mindset to a local problem, and at some point, somebody's gotta dig the ditches. And that's us. One item I heard up here, they wanted a cost-benefit analysis done in four years before, so that is one of the reasons for doing this. Well, we oughta be doing a cost-benefit analysis on this annually, and that oughta be something that's charged to the group that's actually running and spending the money, with oversight by this council. Four years is just far too short a time. This project's gonna need time to germinate. Nobody sitting out there has an exact idea of what this thing's gonna look like right now. There's gonna be some planning, and we're gonna go down some roads, and back up, and go down another one. It's gonna take a little while to get it all sorted out exactly how this is gonna look. We can, as Councilman Rocky put it so well, evaluate this at any point without a sunset. It's not necessary to have one. If things aren't going well, and it's not working, we can put a stop to it. Another argument I heard up here was private money versus public money, and private money always working best. Well, you know, you can look at the Sonic is a good example in our community of what happens when cities prevented from getting involved. Where we have this empty lot down there, they went, they didn't do it, they didn't refurb the property they were on. They just moved on down the road to a piece of green space and built the brand-new one, and left the other one down there. Fortunately, we had somebody buy it and tear it down. But if he hadn't have, I'm sure that old Sonic could still be sitting there. We've got other properties in town like that that were abandoned, and are eyesore today. There are Walmart, old Walmarts all over the country that are that way. And nothing happens to them until school system, like, and I guess apparently the school system bought the old one and turned it into their administration building. But the accountability to this sales tax ultimately lies with this council. If you guys are worried about that, it's just, it's another part of doing this job, and doing your homework, and making sure it's being done. I did that late last year with regards to the Galveston appraisal district. It's not that hard to do. Concern about people being against additional taxes, well, you know, we've agreed that this is something that we should do. If we don't fund it with this sales tax, it's ultimately gonna be a higher tax on the citizens of Friendswood, because it's gonna be done as a property tax, where we pay all of it. This way, at least 40, 50% of this is being paid by people who don't live in our community. Another argument I've heard is sales tax isn't deductible. Well, yes, in fact, it is. All we're asking you to do is just put it on the ballot. We all agreed to do this last time, and everybody, everybody heard the arguments. It was written the way it was. Just put it on the ballot the way it is. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But the council agreed to the ordinance the way it was written then, and I'm afraid that we're really only back up here, because a couple of folks that were on the losing side of this were ultimately upset that this passed. If they've got a problem with it, they have the ability to go out and mount a campaign against it, just as I think many of the folks in here are gonna mount a campaign for it. Another argument I've heard over time is the sales taxes, the lower sales tax here is an incentive to shop here. I just wanna point out the fallacy of that argument. I'm not aware of a single person who's gonna travel from League City to save $1.25 on a tire purchase of $1,000. That's what it would be.
Thank you, girl. Are you done? I thought you paused for a minute.
No, no, no. We cut taxes, we've given back money in the past. If this turns out to not be a necessary thing, I'm sure we'll deal away with it if it doesn't work out. But I just wanna say one more time, this is an extension of previous efforts. And again, Councilman Hill, you were very instrumental in projects with regards to drainage on this very road, this very piece of road. And the progress that we have seen in recent years wouldn't have occurred had it not been for those efforts. All that we're trying to do here, it's just a logical extension of the work you've already put into this. And I don't think that you put that time and effort into that drainage work just to see it only go so far. I think you really want what's best for Friendswood. And again, this is the right way to go. This will carry your initial work further, and ultimately, I think, provide the town what they want. I've set it up here at least twice before, but I've not had anybody come up to me complaining about roads. I really haven't. But I have had people, just all the time, I get comments about the lack of this store or that store. I get this economic development issue all the time. We have an opportunity to do something about it, or put it before the voters. And again, if they say no, they say no. I'm not up here, we're not passing a tax. We're providing the taxpayers the opportunity to decide whether they want that sales tax or not. And we're giving them the opportunity to do it the way it was written. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Scott, you wanted to say, and then I wanna say, I got a question for Point of Order.
Sure. And so, real quick, just a couple of comments. For starters, no government gives back money. So if you don't sunset it, you're not gonna get it back. If you give it back, it would be the first time in a long time that anybody's giving back money out of the government, whether it's a school district, or whether it's a county, or whether it's whoever. So I think this idea that, and it won't even be us, right? Five years from now, it could be anybody. To think that they're gonna call back revenue that's being spent, it's just, history tells me, and it would tell you, that it would never happen. Those chances are very, very rare. And look, it's not a tax deal. I think all of us agree, myself included, that the sales tax is the way to go. There's no doubt about it. People who don't live here paying for services that they're taking advantage of, everybody agrees with that. But in five years of being on this city council, we have not one time cut taxes. So you can have all your discussions about the tax rate and everything else. The amount of money you pay on $100,000 for five years has never been reduced. It has always been the same. We adopted effective tax rate three out of the five years, and two years, we raised taxes, including this year. We raised taxes. As far as the parks deal in the four years, I'm glad that you brought it up. It's not been but four years. And if you look at all of the improvements that were done, and the ability of that Subcommittee to get out with their ideas to the public, for them to generate bonds, to pay for all of the improvements that we wanted to do, those things happened on land that we already owned, if you think about that. There are great initiatives, just like this downtown district, that can come up with creative ways, in a lot less than four years, on how best to spend money to generate businesses downtown. Because at the end of the day, again, there's only so much we can do on public land downtown. It still goes back to the free market. It still goes back to marketing. I would suggest that the group needs to be spending a lot of money on marketing to bring people in, as much as they will on sidewalks and benches. What else? The other thing is, is that I've talked to people that would not be opposed to it if it were sunsetted, or would be more open to voting for it if it were sunsetted. The ones that have called me that are hesitant about supporting it is that it will never go away, and that it will always be there. I think in four years, the three of us who served on that Parks Subcommittee can show the citizens the great progress made in the parks, and the things that we accomplished in four years. The downtown district is not going to require that much more. There's not a whole lot to be done downtown, outside of marketing, to bring in businesses. The sidewalks, the pavers, the benches, the whatever else, the beautification projects, those can be thought out, dreamed up, put pad to paper, in no time. They wouldn't take any more time than it would be for us to come up with a dog park and a disc golf park and everything else that we did. So, again, if you don't sunset it, it'll never come back. It'll always be spent. We've never cut taxes in five years that I've been on city council. And I think that you guys are the smartest, and the brightest, and the most driven, brilliant guys in our community. And if you guys can't do it in four years, then I think there's a problem. And I would suggest that it gets called back, because you guys are the innovators, and you guys have done so much for this community in the past. Four years is a very long time, as we have seen on our Parks Subcommittee. Thanks.
Arnold? If you put a timeframe of four years on the ordinance, does that mean if we don't like it after two years, we can't do something about it? I just, I don't wanna, in the same year, Billy's 12 years, if we put a timeframe on it, we can't do anything about it? I mean, I think it's a good question to ask.
The council's only ability will be to...
Rescind the ordinance.
To place another ordinance, to place another election before the voters. Ultimately, the voters determine whether or not it will continue or discontinue.
So whatever timeframe we put on it is when it'll come before the voters again? Or did I hear you say, we could put it before the voters before the timeframe that was in the ordinance?
If you amend the ordinance tonight to set a limit, whether it's four years, eight, 10 years, or what have you, that does not prevent the council from, at some point before that time has elapsed, passing another election ordinance, and putting before the voters the question of whether or not it should be prematurely terminated.
I think that was a good question for people to be aware of when you're setting a timeframe. Go ahead.
Arnold, just to follow on to that. So in absence of a time limit, the only way to sunset this would be a vote of council to put it back on a ballot for the citizens to vote on to sunset it.
Be a two-step process. The council votes to put that, to call that election, and the voters approve that early suspension.
Which we could do at any time we wanted, correct?
Well, I'm chairing this meeting. One more question. Does it take a different majority to amend an ordinance like this?
No.
Okay.
Simple majority vote.
Great. Everything's qualified now for me. Go ahead, qualify, and then I'm taking my turn to talk.
If this passes in May, we set it up, would this be handled just like any other, like our Keep Friendswood Beautiful, or our Parks and Rec Committee, or Library Committee? Would it be handled in the same vein?
In terms of the four B or the type B corporation, that's, it's gonna be a little bit different, in that they're a separate governmental body, if you will. The council will have the authority to place four council persons on a board of seven. They're separately incorporated. They, they're on their own in terms of where they would derive any services they need. For example, if the board, if the corporation needed legal assistance, which they ultimately will, they could either hire their own independent attorney, or they could rely on the city attorney. But the city of Friendswood would need to be compensated in some way, by way of an interlocal agreement between the city and that corporation, to reimburse the city for whatever resources of the city of Friendswood are used by the corporation.
Thank you. I was, that's where I was taking us. That's okay. Just, go ahead.
That was one of my questions, too, was, I don't know how this works. Are they gonna go out and hire their own engineers, their own contractors? I just don't want this to impose more work for our staff. Are you gonna have your own people? I don't, I have no idea how we're gonna accomplish this.
If the corporation needs professional services conducted in order to advance any of its projects, it will either need to hire those services on its own, and pay for them out of the four B or the type B proceeds, sale tax proceeds, or they can enter into an agreement with the city of Friendswood to allow those professionals on the city of Friendswood staff to lend those services, but they would not be lending those services. There would be, there would need to be some understanding between the two parties as to what the value of those services are, and how the city's gonna be reimbursed for that.
However, it works the same way, with them lending services to the city, because I think they're gonna lend a bunch of service to the city, because they've already got the engineering and design done for these sidewalks. They just have to have them surveyed, because they've already installed them before. So I just wanna put up, point out the other side of the coin. Some of the work's been done. But, Pat, you wanted to talk, and then I'll talk.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right, everyone, take a deep breath. We're just having a great, good, you know, worthy and welcome conversation. First of all, I just wanna just respond to one thing that Councilman Gustafson said. I did not bring this back because I'm a sore loser, or I'm mad at the other side. You know, the morning after our last meeting, I texted Brett, and I, you know, threw, whatever you can, if you can pat somebody on the back, through a text message, I said, way to go. You know, good job on marshaling your influence. So I just felt that it was my duty to bring this in a timely manner for us to discuss this. Secondly, to the point we just discussed, one of the resources I mentioned last year from the Comptroller's Office lists all of these economic development communities, and all of their budget summaries. And yeah, probably between 5% and 10% of their budgets, if you look at all of them in Texas, go to various overhead and administrative costs. So that is something to consider. The other thing that Councilman Enoch said, that four years is arbitrary, I don't think it's arbitrary, because that's what the state has said about the streets tax. I think it makes more sense to pick that number, that length, because then these two things will rise and fall together. The council can then evaluate both of them. And I agree with Councilman Gustafson. We've got to look at the results of these things year in and year out. And you know what? Whether you're in business, or whether you're a student in college, or whether you're on council, nothing focuses your mind but by having a deadline. I'll try to paraphrase Ronald Reagan. He said, "The only life everlasting thing here on earth is a government program." And that's because the nature of government programs, the costs are diffused. And that is the way it is with taxes, that's the way it will be with this. Yet the benefits are always concentrated. And that's how special interest groups are formed, because once they get a hook into that taxpayer dollar, they become very active and very vocal. That alludes to what John mentioned before about how these things tend to devolve. And again, if you reference the articles I've talked about last time, from the Association of Legislative Exchange Councils, that's what happens with these economic development I also wanna point out that two of the people that spoke tonight were business owners that had their sweat and blood in the ground here, and found a way to be very successful. And as Councilman Scott said, you know, that's the core of people that are gonna make our Main Street redeveloped and beautiful. Finally, second from finally, the idea that this new corporation would have the ability to issue debt or to raise debt, I am really against that. I think the power of the purse, if you will, should rest squarely with us on the city council. And we saw five or six years ago when the, due to a previous situation where the city tried to raise debt and it turned out to divide the city in a terrible way. And I think that power ought to stay as close to the council as possible. Finally, David, you may have to help me out with a scripture quote. I know there's one that says, you know, "He who can be entrusted with a small amount can certainly be entrusted later with a great amount." And the money that is going to be generated in this one-eighth of a cent is no small amount. You know, it will be 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars over four years. And I think that's a significant amount and a significant timeframe in which to have a great track record. Thank you for the extra time, Mayor.
Not a problem. Okay. I've heard a lot said tonight. I do live by a rule that's been mentioned, and I'm a firm believer in work without deadlines is playing at work. So, Councilmember Rocky, I'm of the opinion we should set a deadline. You don't go through twelve years of school and say, well, I want the thirteenth so I can raise my GPA to go to college. Set a deadline. We know we had twelve years to get our GPA up. Some of us did, some of us didn't. So, I'm of the opinion that there should be a deadline. Now, more importantly, I want to be one of the people on the board. And I'd like to see Councilmember Hill and Councilmember Scott on it. And I don't know how it works with Dr. Pat being on it and him not running again. But if you guys would support me, I'd like to be on the board. I'm all about fiduciary responsibility. So, I've set a deadline, is good. I don't think it'd be bad for them. I've heard numbers thrown out there. I'd like to hear a motion. I mean, we can reiterate to discuss, but-
Mayor, council, the way I see this agenda lining up is, the action for you to take in this particular item is whether there's a majority to set a sunset.
Got it.
And if that majority says they do want a sunset, then you authorize my review of the ordinance. Your action in item number six would be to actually set that specific duration. So, the question of whether it's going to be five, ten years, or what have you, that would be part of the action you take in connection with the ordinance under number six.
So, do I hear somebody calling a question? Oh, I haven't heard somebody call a question. I know you get to talk two times. I figured it might be prudent to do it on the second one, too. But who raised a hand first? Councilmember Rocky? Councilmember Gustafson?
I'll agree with you, Councilman Hill. Quite a bit of work was done on those bond projects in four years, but it was done with paid staff. This group here, there's nobody going to be paid, and this isn't going to be a full-time gig for anybody out here. It's all going to be done with volunteers. As far as a marketing effort being necessary, I could not agree with you more. Problem is, that marketing effort's not going to be free. I just want to be real clear to you, you guys, you know, I know that, and Dr. McGinnis, I wasn't, I didn't, you certainly weren't, I didn't name you, and I didn't, it was no intent for you to, you were not the target of my-
It was me, wasn't it? I can take it, buddy.
Anyway, look, I have actively campaigned, I share your concern about the creating this quasi-governmental entity that's not totally within our control. I spent quite a bit of time last session at the state capitol in Austin, working diligently to reform the way that management districts, municipal management districts in particular in the state of Texas are created and operated. And I hope our citizens in West Ranch Management District are listening to that, because I'm going to go back up and do some more on it next time. But I, so, you know, I don't have some love affair with these special districts, I guess the point I'm trying to make. With regards to sunset, my concern, particularly with a short one like four years, it gives the perception that council's not willing to commit to this. And if council's not willing to commit, well, why in God's name would we expect anybody else that we hope to lure into here to commit to Friendswood if we won't do it ourselves? So, I'm going to adamantly argue not to put the sunset on there. Again, we are not imposing a tax. We're giving the citizens the opportunity to devote whether they want to impose one on themselves. That's it. That's all we're doing.
Councilmember Gustafson? I mean, Rocky?
I want to make sure we understand what the 4B board does. It is a 4B, it's a separate corporation, it can spend money, and it can manage its activities. All seven members of that 4B are appointed by this council. All seven. We can put four members of our own group on it if we so choose, but all seven are appointed by us. And any of those seven can be removed at any time, just like we can with planning and zoning and these others. We keep here, I keep hearing people saying, y'all this, and y'all are going to have to do this, and you all have to, you know, are going to have to work under a deadline. It's not you all. It is us. It is us. We are going to have to perform this city council, the future city councils, if this passes. So, we, we need to stop this, we're putting you under a deadline, we're not. This is us. And as we have said, we can always put it back in front of the voters. Always. I disagree with Councilman Scott. This city routinely underspends its budget. This city is extremely tight with its budgets. And we have, we spend five meetings in October, it seems like, you know, arguing over the budget because we're very careful about it. I don't think this, this particular board's going to be any different. I think Friendswood can do these things, and I think we've got all the things lined up to it. So, I would prefer that we not put an arbitrary deadline, one that is unnecessary because we always can do it anyway.
Okay, year two. Who's got one left? You've already had two. You've already had two. Have you had two? I haven't had two. Billy, you haven't had two. Well, Hill, have you spoken twice?
They don't want to hear from me anymore.
Well, did you already? Go ahead, Bill. Councilmember Enoch, excuse me.
The last thing I'll bring up is, if you look at what we've put aside for streets the past couple of years, it was $500,000. And we did another $500,000 this year to give us a million that we had to set aside for streets. The only reason we had $500,000 left over is because we couldn't get anybody to come bid on it. It wasn't enough money to draw any attention. And if we put a four-year term on this, they're going to be in the same boat. They're going to, people are going to come in to work with this group or with us and say, you guys really aren't committed. We're going to invest our time on other efforts, on other projects where there's more of a commitment there. And we're also making a lot of assumptions on what the vision for this group is. Right now, none of us really know what the vision for this group is, what it is all they're trying to accomplish. Until you know that, you really don't know what appropriate timeframe is or what the right milestones are to put in place to manage it. And that's why I said it's arbitrary. It's putting handcuffs on them without really, just for the sake of putting handcuffs on them, without really understanding what it is they're going to accomplish, how much it's going to take, how long it's going to take. And, you know, we haven't been able to get people to invest in our, to do maintenance on our streets because we don't have enough commitment there. And I'm afraid if we put a four-year limit on this, we're going to be in the same boat. They're going to be butting their head against a lot of obstacles of not being able to get the right engineering support, people to tackle these construction projects because it's just, the commitment's not there.
Wow. I guess, we're about ready to vote?
So, we need to move to number six, right?
No, we need to, we need to. If this passes, we go to number six, correct, Arnold?
That's correct. We need a majority vote to-
Set a sunset.
To agree that there'll be a sunset provision. And if that passes, then you will move on to number six.
So, we've got a motion and second.
I have a point of order. I recall the motion and second being specifically stating four years.
Which really cannot be part of the motion if that's what it was.
That motion's not valid, right?
No, it's just, it was a motion we backed off that-
So, we need to amend your motion to set a-
Yeah, we backed off to make it a discussion.
Right. And we got the second on that.
I can amend my motion that, I'm speechless all of a sudden. I amend my motion that we vote on whether or not to implement a deadline or a sunset provision in the original ordinance.
I amend my second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Is that satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, moves us on to item six.
No, so, item six isn't dead. You just killed it.
Okay.
Let's be clear. The motion was to set a, to include a sunset provision on the ordinance that you passed at your last meeting.
Right.
That motion having failed does not allow you to go on to number six.
Did you misunderstand the motion?
No.
So adjourned.